Well, as you saw from Faith's presentation, we're currently at a 4.56% tax increase. That does not meet the cap. If we were within the cap, we're looking at a 3.07 tax rate percent increase. Now, there are some changes that need to be made for $146,000 outside of the cap. In addition to that, Mike had suggested that, keeping with the procedure in years past, that we proactively lower the assessment rule to where we believe it will come in, where Vicki's best estimate is for where it will come in in March, so that the tax bill, the rate that we're adopting, will come in pretty close to actual. That will result in a $500,000 decrease to the assessment. With all that factored in, we were about $180,000 that needs to come out of the levy. Or increased revenue, whichever way, either out of expenses or increased revenues. The supervisor had made a few suggestions, I've heard from a few board members. Right now, there is money in for two years' worth of very small raises for all of the employees. If we assume that we can negotiate a zero for 2012, that buys us, Faith, what was the number?
Eighty thousand.
Forty, 140,000. So that was a possibility, as well as Mike had made some suggestions on revenue. We were able to cut $6,000 if we don't pick up the garbage cans on Main Street on the weekends. That's a $6,000 stipend that can be removed from the budget. And then there were some other suggestions that need to be discussed with the full board. Anyone want to add?
Well, how would that one happen? How would we eliminate the $6,000?
Right now, there are proposed changes to the scope of work done by the code enforcement officer. How would you like to talk to them?
Yeah, what you talked about at the last meeting. We're looking at passing that legislation that the shopkeepers would take care of the sidewalks and they'd empty their garbage. It would save the $6,000 stipend that we're paying for Saturday and Sunday morning.
Right, so I can understand the snow piece. But I don't understand logistically how we would just not pick up the garbage and then go down and legislate that certain shopkeepers are responsible for the garbage? How would you, I just don't know how we would do that. Like, you can't do a, "Why are garbage cans in front of this store?" They have to take it out, because that's not fair. So how would we make sure the garbage cans are empty?
I thought the board talked about, now, the garbage company picks up the garbage.
Not on the can?
No, no, no. But the $6,000 we pay that individual is to take the garbage cans and bring them to the back and dump them.
Right.
You know, so I thought the discussion was, it would be a proposal to the shop owners, "If you want a garbage can in front of your location, it'll be your responsibility on the weekends to dump it into the dumpster in the back."
But why don't they all say no?
Then we remove the cans.
And then you put the garbage on the sidewalk?
That's what we have now, though.
Well, no, I don't...
Well, part of the problem is that the garbage cans aren't good for the purpose they use. The holes are too small, so people just lay stuff on top of the garbage can. So, those garbage cans don't work. But ask me, again...
It's not what the study showed when Reese Berman bought them all. That was the whole idea.
No, I paid for those garbage cans.
My pay for that.
I did it twice, okay? The first time, it was a round garbage can, and it was only one. And then there was, and I paid for them when we did the sidewalks. And then the second time, Diane came up with an idea that you should have recycling, because those single barrel things didn't, you couldn't separate plastic from paper. So we brought the three things. And at a meeting, I contributed $12,000. The first ones right now, which is pissing me off, to be perfectly frank, were open highway department, they were $1,200 apiece, and they used this garbage. The second ones have never been maintained by the highway department, and they're falling apart. Now, the reason why it was done with the holes where they are was the recycling. So they do work for the purpose that they were intended.
But people don't use them properly before garbage.
People are using them, the problem is that there's too much garbage, and people don't empty them, and therefore, it winds up with garbage on the sidewalk. And it goes back to one principle that I said in the town. A town looks terrible because garbage isn't picked up. So, you know, if you remove the garbage can, which is a suggestion, is a stupid suggestion, because then the garbage is going to go on the floor. And Mike and I, frankly, most mornings go around and pick up the garbage that people don't pick up. So it's, you know, certain responsibilities that the town has to do. And to save $6,000 for Saturday or Sunday for Tom Barone to pick up the garbage cans, somebody's got to pick up the garbage, okay? And you know the storekeepers aren't going to do that. So it may be a budget situation, saving $6,000. But that $6,000 is going to make the town look horrible, okay? So I think that's a poor suggestion.
Well, that's the point, is if we eliminate that from the budget, then we have no sense of who's going to either empty the cans, or if we give the option to the businesses, they're going to say, "I'll pass the cost down to somebody else," and they end up with no garbage cans, which to me is an issue. And the reality is, and we've talked about this, in a small enough town where we could pinpoint it, it's one garbage can. It's one garbage can. And it's one garbage bin within that container, which is the one in front of the right thing in the bagel store. And I'm happy that the businesses are flourishing, and there's lots of garbage to put in it. But that's the issue. So if we just figure out a solution, maybe even talking to one business owner that we talked about last week, saying, "Hey, can you help us here? Could you wipe that one down? Could you check it, maybe empty it for us?" That's the issue. It's not the garbage can by the post office, it's not the one across the street, it's not the one in the alley, it's not the one by Cherry Blossom. It's not, that's it, that's what we're talking about.
Maybe is the, make a sense to have an additional can there that's easier to empty, one that has a plastic liner, that they just...
Just a garbage can?
Yeah. Maybe it's got to be, it's got to be a solution where you don't spend $6,000 for one can for, you know, two days a week.
Well, no, that's the, I mean, all of them get a weekend empty. That's the only one that gets overflowed.
Do you think the bagel store owner, because I'm sure, I mean, I'll just give you a simple solution. I think it's very simple. Country Kitchen is open on Sundays and Saturdays as well, as the bagel store. And that's where the garbage is generated from, and the pizza store. Those three places.
On the ice cream. It's really, it's really...
So if you had a can in front of each one of those places, and asked them if they would like to empty their garbage in their own places, they have a guy in each store that empties their garbage. When they do that, why couldn't they empty the one right in front of the thing? But ask them, not a requirement. And I'm sure you'd get them to do that. And if it works, then you can eliminate the $6,000. But at the expense of leaving the garbage on the street.
That's what I thought we talked about last week.
That is.
About reaching out to the businesses and seeing if they cooperate.
Yeah, and I don't think they would have a problem with it. The thing is, it's not just emptying the garbage. It's during the day, you go out, you check it. If there's an ice cream on it, or soda cans, or something that fell on the floor around it, they have to clean it up. We can't go there three times a day on a Saturday, because they had a very big event, and it's dirty again. We're not going to be able to keep up. But I've spoken to the stores in the past, and they were willing to be part of this. The bagel store, the ice cream store, you know, I think to have a conversation with them is not the wrong direction, that's the right direction. The way we're doing it, it doesn't work. The garbage bins are dirty. The recycling committee also suggested the idea of having plastic bags in those garbage bins in order to facilitate easy emptying. And we think that that's the right answer. That those particular garbage bins would have plastic bags, so they could be easily taken out and the new bag put in. So it has to be a coordinated effort, because what's there now does not work. It's dirty, the town doesn't look good, sadly, inside the garbage bins, on the top, and all around it. It's sticky, it's dirty, and we can't keep up.
I think that's where everybody agrees.
Good.
So we keep the $6,000 in. We talk to a handful of businesses that seem to provide more garbage, and see if they help us out. And if we want to go to the bags, we can go to the bags. It's a good idea, because it's easy to just, if it's full, you don't have to worry about taking it back and dumping it in the bag, you just take out the bag. And then you can leave it in the alley for an hour until somebody brings it back.
You bring it to the store, bring it to the back door, and that works?
Why are we keeping the $6,000 in if they're emptying it?
Because they haven't agreed to it yet.
No, we also know, this is just a temporary fix until we finally get this garbage district, parking district set up. This is for them to help us until we solve the larger solution. So this is a temporary thing. And I think the store owners, you know, we can have a conversation in writing and in person with them.
Well, we have one more meeting. I'll be glad to talk to them before the next meeting. But my attention would be that that $6,000 would not be necessary. And I'm confident that they would agree.
I'm just still confused, but what if, what if it doesn't get working out? Then who's picking the garbage up on the weekends?
Well, we want them to. We have a conversation with them. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a conversation.
Before next Friday, is that a next meeting for them?
Monday.
Monday, so over the week. I'll make sure I talk to everyone of them.
And just to keep everybody on the same page, in 2011, you actually spent $8,500 for this service. And we're at $6,000 just through November 16th. So the $6,000 doesn't cover it. It, you know, obviously, the budget must not have kept in time with whatever overtime...
It's supposed to be a, it's just a, it's a number per day, per weekend.
We'll take a look at that.
That's the way I'm stopping the waste.
Plus you're paying, obviously, you're paying all your payroll taxes, plus your retirement on that dollar amount. So it's an expensive way to solve the issue.
And just the last thought, is that the recycling committee said twice a year, the garbage will be taken back to highway. If it's dead, it needs to be sprayed, cleaned up, scrubbed, and then put back. So we're providing with the garbage, it'll be cleaned twice a year, and the garbage bags. And then they just help empty it on the weekend and maintain it. So it's a nice, you know, mix, it's some of both.
As long as you can get commitment from many business owners or enough, that it's going to be a strict schedule, they're being emptied strictly, and there's no... Because once they fall down on it, because a lot of those business owners aren't in those properties, especially in the weekends, they rely on workers. And...
Well, that's exactly why we need to pass the Clean the Street legislation. So there's some teeth in it.
We need to get the commitment, because they have to clean it before they go home, before they close. And, you know, they close at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night. The ice cream place is the biggest one. The kids are in there eating ice cream. And by the time the 10:00 o'clock roll around, the garbage can is full. They have to get out there, clean it up, so Mike and Mike don't have to go around, walking around town, picking up the garbage at 6:00 in the morning.
Okay, it's a small item, let's just make sure that it's not penny wise and pound foolish and we got a messy downtown in January.
Well, we currently do have a messy downtown, and that's why we're trying to fix it.
Yeah, it could be a lot worse, trust me. It's not as bad as you think it is, but it's not great. It could be a lot worse.
The one issue that we need to resolve is, there was a change made, again, with the code enforcement officer, which brought that position down to part-time. I believe the supervisor now is requesting that it be returned to full-time with some different duties.
Correct.
That's an addition in the budget of about $44,000.
The thinking was that there's additional jobs that Mr. Barone can do, and would make his position more productive. He's actually willing to take over. We've had an issue with street lights, even though we are compensating a highway person for that. Lights don't seem to get fixed or changed. Tom is willing to take that on. He's driving around all the time anyway. So I'd like to switch that job over to him, and have him take care of that. There's, really, the job is pretty straightforward. You find that light that's out, you call the electrical company, and they come and repair it. Additionally, I've been very interested in getting LED lights put in our town, at least get the process started. I've finally met with a company that does that. And we're waiting to see if we can get a test light set up. And I'd like to have somebody that's more responsive to that, working on that project. So that's one area. It's not really a savings, but I think it would be more efficient for the town. That's an area. And there's some additional jobs that the building department, myself, and Tom want to sit down with and go over those things. I think we can, I think we can use him more productively.
Okay, so if he's back in, where are we, John?
With the addition of Tom back in at the 44, we need to cut 184 out to make the...
184 out, okay. And we can defer those pay increases, that's 140, is that right?
Well, that's going to have to be a decision, so that when Howard and I are in negotiations next Monday, we know where we are with 2012.
Okay, and that's, so now we're dealing with 44?
Right, and I did make a suggestion.
Can you think of, sorry, the 140 for pay increases? That's not always general, that's...
No, that was, that was...
We had a total of 300.
That's just general, I thought. It'll lower it across, okay. The other thing is, Faith and I have met with your, the current auditing firm. We're continuing to have difficulties with this firm. We've found a lot of errors in the 2011 cap, which really are complicating both Faith and my job, trying to correct these and go back. And I'm puzzled by the lack of cooperation that we have with the current firm. In any event, I requested that we renegotiate the price. They have declined to renegotiate, and they also are unable or unwilling to accommodate our time needs. They want to audit us on February 4th. There's no way we can be, have the books closed and have everything ready by February 4th. I requested the end of March. They told us they can do this at the end of May, which is past the May 1 deadline for the submission of the annual update document to the state auditor, to the state comptroller. I'm considering, Faith and I, no, I want to use audited numbers, I don't want to use our figures. So my proposal would be to seek requests from, I did contact two other auditing firms that I did have experience with. Now, one of them escapes my name, my thought process. But they're both not from the area. One is in Albany, and one is in upstate, again, also in upstate New York, which allows them to come in at a lower price, because they're not paying Westchester salaries. So I have requested proposals from them. When they come in, I'm anticipating it'll be at least $30,000 cheaper than where we are. And that's a significant number. So in my mind, when we're struggling for $6,000 here, $15,000 on the snow removal for the sidewalks, it makes sense to pay a lower professional services fee. So that, if the board so agrees, I can go out and seek those and see where we are. There's $80,000 budgeted in here, I think we can easily get the job done for $50,000.
And you said in here, we don't have to go to an RFP?
You should. It's a best practices recommendation, but I don't think we have the time for that. And Anne, you might be able to help me out, because if we go to advertise on the 12th...
No, but what if you, you know, you got the board's, you know, approval right now to do an RFP, and when you have it, you can...
I can put it out? Okay.
But do we have the time?
I think that's the right way to do it.
Well, for people to be back, what could I give? It's a simple thing, you send them the current audit, they see, you know, what the scope of the work is. And Faith and I have already met with two, with one firm, and, you know, we can...
That's why you've already started it, so...
Doesn't Rosky look them?
No, Rosky is upstate.
So you could get a proposal?
Okay, we could do that, if the board so agrees, because that looks like...
I would agree with it, as long as you feel you've got the time to still get it done. It sounds like the current auditing firm is, even if they lower their price, their timing still doesn't work? It's either February or late May?
I know last year, they also did it in February, and it was a real problem.
It's too early.
Dawn Donovan.
They do it in February, yeah. Have they always traditionally done it in February this time?
Historically, with Dawn, I know she always wanted to get it done. But she, I mean, she's been here for long enough that she could do that.
I remember Dawn Donovan was a former auditor, you know, so she did all her own, you know, work papers and, you know, just handed everything, which still boggles my mind at the price that we're paying for this size, with all that assistance that she did.
So just for purposes of the vote, are you going to make a motion, someone, that you did go out for an RFP?
I have no problem with it. Anybody problem with it?
No.
I'll make a motion and go out for an RFP for the auditing firm.
Right.
All fair. And the current audit will be included, A of the...
Of course, of course. And I think that's the timeframe we're looking for, so that we make sure. Okay, so...
But that, it seems like you think there's going to be a savings there regardless, whether it's the current auditor or...
Right, whoever it is. I think just putting the RFP out will bring that price down.
And that's probably around...
Thirty grand.
Thirty.
Is there anybody else around here? O'Connor Davies, we're going to corner the market on.
Yeah, really good, they bought everybody else up.
When we put it out, when we advertise it, it'll go out to, you know, whoever's in the area. I've done this previously, and generally, you're going to find that the local places, because they pay these salaries, they're going to be higher.
And there's no downside to that, you think?
No, you know, what I like about O'Connor Davies is that they have a lot of experience in Westchester County. So as I expressed to Alan, or the partner that's assigned to us, what I look for from the auditing firm is helpful suggestions. I want to know what other towns are doing that we're not, that, you know, we could be doing better. And I gave him a list of things that I wanted him to get back to me on, and, you know, we'll leave it at that.
I can say from personal experience, though, my years working with them, they were always very responsive and helpful in asking direct questions. "Can you give me some background on this? Can you give me some research on this?" They'd always come back with, and they've been good, I think, to the town through the last few years, and helping us get to where we are now, and provides good advice. But there's still a numbers issue here.
Right.
So everybody's cutting where we can. So if you need a safer, better service for cheaper, you got to look at it.
Right, and, you know, she did this just for the auditing thing, she was coming in and checking numbers, and from my experience, I'll tell you, it's not that hard. Find enough people sit here and want to look at numbers all day.
Another suggestion that I had, and I don't know if everybody had a chance to review Faith's estimates of where we are, where we will be at the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay, Faith, what was the total on the general fund that we think we're going to be to the black? It was a significant amount.
Yeah, so if you look, I mean, revenue will be fairly neutral versus the budget. It's going to be aligned with the budget on the revenue side, and then on the expense side, we're going to be favorable, probably close to a million and a half. And that's primarily, close to a million and a half. It's primarily due to, you know, salary, or hiring freezes, rather. We had at least four different, four positions that weren't filled this year. So the salary on the benefits for all of those positions is very favorable.
Now, I'm not sure I had shared with the full board, but I am proposing a change in how we record sales and mortgage tax moving forward. Mortgage taxes received twice a year from the county, and sales taxes received four times a year. Now, the payments that you receive, you physically receive in that year, aren't necessarily related to the 12 months that are included in that calendar year, which always results in an accrual at the end of the year, and then an adjustment the following year. So an estimate that you can make at the end of 2012 can effectively change your 2013 revenue. I'd rather, and I did have permission from auditors, previous auditors to do this, I'd rather change to a, basically, a cash basis on those two revenues, because you're still recording 12 months of revenue, but it's not the 12 months of the particular calendar year. It just shifts in a couple of months. But then there is no accrual at the end of the year, there is no estimation. It's what you received, you received, and going forward. If we do that, we will lose, we will have to record about $400,000 less in revenue in 2012. And we can afford to do that this year, because if we do come out to the black, one and a half in expenses, we have the room to eat the $400,000. Well, all that being said, if we do that, and we still come out to the black about $1 million, that will increase us over the 20% fund balance. What I'm proposing is that in 2013, if we're going to do capital projects, rather than budget the money and levy taxes to fund it, we pull it from fund balance in 2013 once the books are closed for 2012. So there's $50,000 in the general fund, that's just a transfer to capital for whatever might come up. I'm proposing to pull that out, and you, you know, if we need to do a project in 2013, you appropriate the fund balance in 2013 and increase the expense, and then it's a zero hit to the taxpayer.
These, that sales tax, cash basis, how does that affect 2013? Does it increase or project the revenues?
No, no, nope. We did increase it a little bit, but it's not a movement to 2013, right.
Because you're, because we're tracking that way.
Right.
So you just pick up...
Whatever, the four months, the four payments of sales tax and the two payments of mortgage in 2013 are what they are. And they should, and we agree what they should make it.
Yeah, so I think it's a good idea, as long as, and we talked about this, as long as we have the excess money. If we do, then it's a good accounting maneuver, and we pick up, you probably know you're going to start with maybe three, almost 350 in sales, in recording tax, and probably close to 750 in sales tax. So you know going in, it's almost like a, you already know, you predict pretty closely, you predict what it is.
It goes quicker.
This way, at the end of the year, if you're not guessing, the numbers are there. You know what, Janet?
Makes sense.
So that would be my proposal, would be to pull the $50,000 out of that transfer to capital that currently exists in the 2013 budget.
Well, I also don't think that the 20%, you keep talking about 20%, there's anything sacred about that 20%. We don't need to go to 20% this year if we feel we need more money for capital projects. I think it's important, we've had, we've put off a lot of important projects for a long time. And I think it's time to, if we have money available, to work towards some of these projects. Every building needs roofs, we know we're short on vehicles, technology has been ignored, there's some infrastructure needs. You know, the town has been, we've been holding down our tax increases, because we haven't maintained the town. And if there's some money left over there, I think that if you want to move towards a higher revenue, you can do that, but I don't know if you necessarily need to put the whole million dollars towards that in one shot. I don't think it matters whether you go from 17 to 20 in one year, or 17 to 19, or 18. I think it's important to use that money to serve the people. I think we should think about, you know, a balanced approach. A balanced approach, right.
Going back to the fund balance, we can decide next year to use this year's excess fund balance. So that's not a decision we have to make today.
No, no. We're estimating, our best guess is like 21.3...
Yeah, we'll be slightly, we'll be over the 20%. So therefore, we wouldn't bring that money into the budget and increase the taxes. We'd leave it in fund balance, and then we'd use that to do some capital projects, but we'd take it out of fund balance rather than the budget.
Can you say that's about a million four?
No, I don't know if you does the cash account.
You're saying there's a million?
It's about a million dollars.
I'm just not sure you want to put it into fund balance initially, because it's more difficult conceptually to remove it.
Well, if you use fund balance to balance your budget, then you have a technically unbalanced budget, because you're using savings to fund current operating expenses. What I'm talking about is in a future year, we're in June, and we say, you know, we need a roof over there, it's going to be $200,000. The board passes a resolution, which pulls the money from the fund balance and puts it into a capital project to do the roof. That's not a, I don't, I don't think there's a negative impact to that.
I'd rather, I'd rather see us put that money into...
The budget?
Either budget or another fund balances earmarked for capital projects.
You certainly can, you can designate fund balances. And while we think it's going to come in about a million, I mean, I was being conservative in saying 750 would be what would bring us to the 21.3, because from what I'm told, there's always last minute expenses that we don't see until, which is why we put the purchasing freeze in effect, so that we would know what was coming in.
And my understanding is, we've never done that here. We've never had these other fund balances that we put aside as reserve funds for project infrastructure. But I think that's the wisest thing to do, especially in areas that you know you have recurring needs every year. You know, going back to the hotel tax. Again, if we get that instituted, there's an area that I would earmark for infrastructure. So we have a recurring revenue stream to take care of some of these things.
And that's a good idea.
And actually, it's much more palatable if you had it earmarked that way for all the... And it actually, you know, is much more palatable if you had it earmarked that way for all the departments. So, why not set that fund up now and start funding it? We know we have these needs.
Well, I'd like to see the list of needs and have it put against specific items. I mean, did we even have for the fifty thousand?
No, there was no.
There was no list of projects. I mean, we had this.
We do have a.
I got no list, but no.
Yeah, we need to tighten it up.
No, I think we have to sit down and prioritize those lists. And we've gone through with the rec department, we prioritize the projects, you know, starting leasing roofs, and I don't know, I'm taking it from there. But I'd, I'd like to see us have a list of specific things that we gotta put that money towards if we're gonna build that.
We're talking about the true CIP plan, the true capital planning plan, which I think now that you're here, you can help really, um, bring that together, cause there wasn't, there is one that exists. It's not a real good working plan. We tried to restart it again, we need somebody to champion it now that you're here. It's a good use of administrative time, is to really get your ones right. True CIP plan, and all you do is take it off the shelf, and do what I was talking about. Okay, here, John, here's a, here's a priority list, and you match up the money to the priorities, and you start knocking them off. That's it. No, anything? Good, so, good.
I was gonna say, I agree very much with it, because we have the goal of trying to create more parking for downtown Arma. And also Northway Plains, the commercial district, is failing. The stores and the buildings cannot be sold or renovated. And one of the capital projects where I pulled out an old folder was creating sidewalks for North Broadway and creating infrastructure that provides the residents to use their downtown, and also the downtown to encourage the buildings to be sold and rented out. So, I think earmarking money will also produce us money, because if we have better parking in downtown Arma, it helps the stores make money. If we have better sidewalks in Northway Plains, it not only creates a quality of life for the residents, but it creates more taxes that we'll receive from higher value from those buildings. So, I definitely think earmarking, otherwise we're never gonna get it done. So, those are two projects for you to be aware of, that we've thought of in the past, and there's folders and information on them, and earmarking will help those projects to get started.
Just a, well, a comment on the fund balance, though. I think I did, I may agree with most of what Howard said, except for, I think that percentage, I think we do both here. I think we achieve the twenty, I think that is important, especially to the rating agencies. And, um, you still use some, some of the excess. So, we can still get capital improvements, then use some of the money, but we're still hitting that number. I wouldn't agree to use any of it in the budget as an appropriate fund balance. We've gotten away from it the last few years, it's a good practice, and we should stay away from it. It should be structurally balanced like we're doing. We have, you're right, Howard, in previous years, capital improvements were stopped. Going back, I don't know, maybe five or six years, seven years. But the last two years, we have budgeted money. Not in hard dollars, as far as let's do that and let's pay for it right away. I know you prefer to do that, and I know Joan does. But, we budgeted money the last two budgets in using it to fund bonds. And we, and so we could fund two, three million dollars a year in bonding to do capital improvements. And that was just a recommendation from the budget, it's not a task force. So, I know we disagree on that a little bit, but Joan shed us some more light on that too. And I, you know, I can see where you can do both, where if it, if it, if you really need to bond it, bond it. If you really can stake money away, like you're talking about, well, then let's do that too. And I think that's where, that's where we're at.
Well, I think we should look at the list and get, and determine. I'd like to come up with a number based on looking at some projects and, you know, prioritizing.
I think that's a good idea.
And then we back.
And I don't think that bonding. I don't think Woody's gonna make a difference whether we're nineteen or twenty, if we feel we have that X number of dollars of projects we need to do. I don't think that's gonna make a big difference to moving. Especially if you're moving in the right way.
Let's look at when we back into a number.
If we can get everything done, and most of it done, and go to nineteen or eighteen point five, you know, that's.
Yeah, you're moving in the right direction.
And then next year, we're worried about bringing it back up.
I don't wanna go down.
No, no, we all agree.
Let's look around that.
No, and I, I think that as far as the bonding goes, I think that my feeling is, and I think that Joan agrees with me, that you have to make sure which a bonding is truly a long-term capital item. Because otherwise, it's truly not a bond, in my opinion, it's not a bondable item.
Okay, so that, so that gets us where now? You pull back fifty thousand dollar transfer to capital, now we're below.
Well, here's, here's the, the whole, just to do the, the easy ones. If you don't permit the 2012 increases, and pull the thirty thousand out of auditing, and pull the fifty thousand out of transfer to capital, you're two hundred and twenty K down, which with the five hundred thousand dollar. Change in assessment, we should be just about at the cap.
So, so order, order a reduction, no raises or minimal ra, or smaller raises.
Nothing for 2012, for 2013, we do have something in there.
Cut fifty from capital.
Yeah.
And you reduce the assessables by five hundred thousand?
And you reduce the order to thirty K.
She added a raise of that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
But the, the cutting the assessables is going in the other direction.
Correct, correct.
So, what is that number?
That just affects the rate.
That just affects the rate. This will definitely bring us under the cap, but it should bring us in at, what, were we three and a half, Faith? On the percentage?
All right, so the, the, right, so the cap is a three point oh seven percent levy.
But without the five hundred.
Right, and then, right, so where we're staying right now, and then it's three point five five rate increase at the cap. But to bring it down, to bring the assessables down.
Brings us to four percent, four flat, right?
So, the, so, wow, that, the tax rate increase would be four percent at the cap, with the assessables coming down.
Right.
And she gets a relief.
But that doesn't, that's not changing the levy.
No, didn't.
The assessable, lowering the assessable is just.
The tax rate increase, though, it's four, it will become.
Be more or less.
How close did we come this year after the adjustment of this year?
Pretty close, I mean, a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, Vicky said, yeah. Vicky said you were very good.
It was slightly, uh, good. I think we projected it, like, two hundred thousand lower than I actually got set at, I think. I think that's it. But it was, it was close. And it's been slowing, though. So, you know, the conventional wisdom is in thirteen, it's a new rate that was coming on. And, and there's less certs, because we're getting through that upper third in town that we're over assessed. You know, we have, now things working in our.
We're starting to flatten out.
Yeah, starting to flatten out.
We're getting there.
Yeah, there's a couple of years there where things sort of bottomed, and then they, before they start up.
Everybody started, almost three, four years ago, we're all coming.
There's a, there's a lifetime, of course, you know, with government, it takes you eighteen months or two years. But I think we're at that.
Certs for this year, compared to previous years, is a little bit less, maybe it's like fifteen percent less. So, it's starting to back off a little bit. And they'll not gonna be settled before they certify the rule anyway, so.
So, is that number bigger than it should be? That you wanna?
Five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's bigger.
No, you know.
I don't say it was too small, but five hundred's.
Vicky and I and Faith had a conference call about this, and, um, she's, Vicky said she's comfortable. It, it's between lowering the assessment and keeping the money in here for refunds for activity for the remainder of the year. She thinks she has a little bit of a cushion, but I wouldn't recommend lowering that.
Is Arma Square receiving a partial assessment since it's a partial bill till we pass that in?
They get assessed June first.
June first, what would that be?
Who knows, that doesn't matter how much of it's done. Should be a.
A big portion should be done.
Should be.
Have we calculated that in?
That'll affect the 2014.
The amount works, it's always a year like. That's what Joan's talking about, that's the next time you do this, we might see the scale start to tip in off. At least flat.
Yeah.
Right. This is really your, your hardest year, because you're having, you have increases in the pension and healthcare, and you have, again, the, the assessment role going down. Next year, if we can keep the assessment role flat, it helps us.
Yeah, I think this is the toughest year we're gonna have.
But we said that the last three years.
No, it's the toughest year in his administration, it's not more.
By far the toughest in my administration.
I keep saying, this is gonna be the worst, this is gonna be the last worst.
But we actually, we actually have some assessments going.
Considering what I was reading about the other towns, it was in yesterday's paper, we're doing pretty good.
Well, Howard said that in the meeting.
Yeah, and talking to the other supervisors, I think we're, you know, done a good job of controlling. Now, you're saying that we have a, you have a lot of hits in that scenario you just gave us.
Yeah.
So, I, I would like to have a little cushion of comfort there. If all of a sudden the auditors don't come in fitting as low as you think, or whatever, is there any other areas that we should focus on that we can look at that give us a little bit more of a cushion?
Well, these are the ones that don't hurt your level of services. Um, at least in my opinion, these are what, what keeps you flat. Now, if you're starting to look at cutting services or changing, you know, how the town provides its services to the residents, then, then sure, Howard, you can look at other things. Do any of the board members have suggestions that you'd like us to look at?
There's still some staffing adjustments that I feel have to and definitely need to be done. And I've expressed those to, to you, Joan. And I'd like for those staffing adjustments to happen. They also feel there's some pension, um, situations that still have to be corrected, including the town board. And I'd like for us to discuss them, because these are real dollars.
One of the suggestions that Diane had made, related to the police detectives, and that's something that's very timely, that I think we should discuss. Right now, we are two positions vacant in the police department, which I did do the analysis, and I forgot to bring it. Uh, I mentioned it to Mike, you had asked for an analysis of the overtime versus hiring. And it does, obviously, we're better off if we hire at least two to cut back the overtime. There had, Diane had made a suggestion about possibly not having detective services performed in the town. The possibility of that, and there are a couple of different scenarios where you can do that. You can ask another agency to absorb those detectives. But first, before we would make any sort of change like that, we would need to have a full investigation with our police department and speak to another department in Westchester that doesn't have detective services to see how does that affect the operation of the department. That being said, it wouldn't be my proposal to have them actually absorbed by another department. We're, we're down two positions, we have two vacant, and we have two individuals out injured who may not return to work. So, technically, we're down four positions. These detectives, there's three, the two detectives and a detective sergeant, they know Arma, they, they know North Castle. They're our guys, they're, they're very experienced. And while you'd pay a premium for them, for an officer at top pay between a detective, I think it's a fifteen thousand dollar differential, I think they're worth it. I, I think it would be worth it to have them in, because then, even if you decide not to do detective services, you put these guys back into the patrol, it's, that would be obviously up to them if they wanted to transfer to another department. But you would have a detective's eye in a patrolman, and, and you would retain their positions here. So, right now, the police department is looking at filling those two slots to try and bring that six hundred thousand dollar overtime number back down to a reasonable number. You know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna start spinning our wheels here and stop them from filling those positions and keep spending the six hundred thousand, because I, I don't think that an analysis of the detective work can be done. Certainly not within the, the timeframe of the 2013 budget. I mean, that might be a change that you look at for 2014, whether or not you change those service levels. And remember, there may be some changes happening in the PD, there may be some reorganization going on there. Minor, you know, maybe losing one of the top guys, but, or losing one of those positions, I should say, losing one of the guys. That will allow us to shift some responsibilities around and, and gain some more efficiencies in that department. But, there is a possibility to think about this for 2014, because there are two officers out injured who, there's a good likelihood that those officers will not be returning. So, we may be able to investigate this for 2014. I just don't think you have the time to do a proper analysis for twenty, obviously for 2013. Now, some of the other suggestions that came up, I, you know, really do, they are significant changes in staffing. And, and again, I don't think it's fair to a department to, you know, not have the time to, to really research the effect of losing staff. And, this is your decision. My thought is if we can get the increase per the median household to about a hundred dollars, you know, Councilman Roth, Councilwoman Roth would like to bring it to a zero increase, which is a valid objective. If you do that, you'd have to cut about eight positions out of the budget. So, it, it's, you know, is it worth losing that, those services for about a hundred dollars, a hundred and seven dollars to the median household? That's all, you know, which way would the residents be more upset? That's just my, my thought. But there are absolutely issues where departments that we need to look at the staffing and see if the staffing is appropriate. There are a couple of departments that haven't yet had a staffing analysis. And we would like to continue with that, you know, and if I could ask for the finance task force's help in doing that, that would be great, you know, so that we can have an unbiased look at, you know, really, what's the right number? How do you right-size government, how do you get to the, the most efficient method? As the supervisor had suggested, had mentioned, there haven't been a lot of technology advances over the last few years. And I'm moving forward with that, we're disagreeing on how to fund it, but we're moving forward, and that really does lower your reliance, anything that promotes your reliance on an employee saves your money, so.
Well, one example was the online registration.
The online registration, right.
That's gonna free the people.
Absolutely. But it may, it may then.
A lot of paperwork.
May result in not needing the number of man-hours that you have.
But I agree with that, you need, one of the reasons we brought you in is to look at the town and how efficiently do we run it? But you need time to do that, figure out, are these departments efficient as they can? Or is there overlap, can there be some shared services amongst departments? So, you just need time to do that, you know, if you can make any of those decisions in nine days.
Actually, very happy Ann and I had met with our cleaning service, and they've agreed at the current rate to, there was a disagreement about the contract to start cleaning ten below road, which lowers some part-time hours, because they had a part-time cleaner over there, so, you know, and that's what we'll be looking at.
I approve the quality of their service overall.
Yes.
Let's forget that.
That's the ultimate. Yeah, I think that Joan makes a very good point. It's, it does take you a while to sort of get the lay of the land. Now that I've been here a year, I sort of know where we should be looking, much better than when I first walked in. And Joan, I can sort of focus on the areas that we know that need to be addressed. We've already started to, you know, poke at a few of them. And I think that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend we go through wholesale league and, and start cutting services until we really analyze it, and I think.
Well, I, I wouldn't concede that cutting bodies equals to cutting services necessarily, I mean.
Well, that's, that's, that's an analysis, exactly, that's exactly the analysis.
Because I think there are departments that are to need overstaffed, and they have to be looked at. And I think you're gonna find a lot of, in the case of the.
Well, I think, I think the technology also will definitely yield savings, in a question of my mind.
But you, you never, we never went through the exercise of going back to the department heads and asking them for anything.
No, we did not. Faith and I, you know, met with each of the departments, and we were fairly comfortable. Actually, Faith did go through with a couple of departments and lowered their budgets from their original estimates. But no, we did not go back and say, and, and my fear with that is if you go to a department and say, I need you to cut ten percent, they, they may cut where we don't want them to cut, where, where if, to save an employee or to save hours, they may cut technology or cut something that in the big scheme would actually help us to do.
But we can always.
You can always ask.
You know what?
We can ask, and then we can always adjust that if they come in and do something that's contrary to kind of our ends, we can always.
I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that you actually do that. Go back and ask them to, on a recommended basis, five percent cut. Because what that does, it gives you an insight into what their thinking is. It's very revealing to first management style and process. And you'd be surprised, I've done this in the past, and you get some very interesting answers. Sometimes they come up with some insightful things that you may not wanna do right now, but you can work towards next year, and you don't, you've never thought of them. So, it gives them the opportunity to be somewhat creative. So, I think it's a good exercise, even if you don't go through with it at this time. So, I'd like to recommend you do that.
Faith and I'll get that done this week, and then we'll bring you back the answers next Monday.
I still feel that man-hours and employees in the town is our largest expense and our easiest way of understanding the budget. I still feel we need to look at. I still feel we need to look at that. There are certain departments that are absolutely overstaffed. And from when I moved in this town 20 years ago to now, the staffing has doubled in the particular one I was talking to you about. I used it constantly and I think the adjustment can happen. We don't have to wait for some study for a year. I think we could go to the department head and let them understand that we realize the difference between then and now. That it's the same services being provided, but being provided by a lot more people. And those people are dollars and it's an expense. And I'm sorry, we have to sharpen our fences. I want us at zero. I know last year we were really close to getting to it. We just didn't go that extra mile. Well, I'm not gonna let it happen. We must go to zero. You may think you're cutting services. No, we're not. We're just thinking of better ways to make this town run. You know where the cuts, I said they have to be. And I think we need to do them. I think we need to go back to the department head and sit them down and say, absolutely no overtime. I want to know how did you staff this five years ago? How did you staff it 10 years ago? What's so different from then to now? Why are you doubling the amount of people? Why are you so much more people? Those people are dollars. And it's dollars that we're taking from the residents in town that cannot afford to live here. So we have to do it. I won't accept, oh, we'll study it and we'll do it next year. No, we're here now. This is our job. I'm willing to sit down with any day, any time, any meeting with these people. I'll say, I want no stipends. I want no increases. I want no overtime. And I want to know how did you get to this many people in your department? Why?
That's what I want to have. I don't want to sound so crazy. But it happens. We did push back quite a bit and, you know, we corrected their budgets and then, and then we discussed them and we tried to find areas where we felt that, you know, there was too much of a way of spend. But I think in order to do the analysis that you're talking about, we really have to look at all the metrics. We really have to look at the staffing analysis. And, you know, my concern is that we haven't had the opportunity to really, to really do that, so.
I think the department head knows how they used to run it five years ago and how come now they're running the same thing, the same way, but it's double the amount of people. It's, and it's not that they're doing a bad job. It's just, oh, I need one more to do this. I need one more to do that. No, you don't. You didn't in the past. Why do you now? Technology has gotten better. You should have been more efficient, not less. And that's, and people have moved up in scale and they get more qualified, more qualification, and they're just more expensive. So I think we have to go to the department head, sit them down and say, show me why did you increase from this many people to this? What are you doing so differently?
We actually did have an issue with, I think, one of the departments that you're actually speaking about where it was not pretty with the department head. We stopped overtime. The overtime was contrary to the.
I know, I got that one though.
So.
And it has to be.
Well, yeah. So, and the argument from the department head was that they don't, that person, there's not enough employees to staff. So understand, we're diametrically opposed and, and so it's not, it's not a, it's not, it's not going to be an easy test. It's not going to be where, you know, okay, maybe we can cut this or cut that or reorganize. It's, they're completely on opposite ends of the spectrum as far as how many people are needed for that particular location.
I'll go to that meeting with you. We'll see some changes happen.
So we're, we're up to the task. We aren't planning on analyzing that and getting that at the proper level. But I just don't see the, in order for it to affect your taxes for this coming year.
But that's the real dollars. It's still the head count. We know that. And it's the, who, who is receiving healthcare? Who contributes to pension? Everybody. We gotta go each one of those people and say, can that person do part-time? Are they receiving correctly? Look when Supervisor Arden said everybody contribute 15%. Two people popped up that said, oh, I didn't need this. I've been getting healthcare.
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere, all these years. I want the list of each person we're paying their healthcare for. And I want a certified letter sent back, understood or something. I just, I thought there was more mistakes. That, that's the real numbers. The healthcare, pension contributions, and it's the head count. And we just have to be more efficient, more smart. We're better off maintaining contracts than we are people. The more services we're able to get out of town, let's do it. Because maintaining people and equipment and the buildings they're in and the offices they're in, the insurances, it's too expensive. When everyone can push out of town, do it.
And we have been working with one department head on that. And we have seen a shift in, you know, full-time versus outsourced services. And we were able to reduce the budget accordingly for that, so.
Just to bring up Tom Boroni, why are we bringing him up to 44? Is he receiving healthcare and pension now?
Now, yes.
And why are we, you know, is that absolutely necessary? Is there someone else, a building inspector that could do as part of their job, the lights?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So why are we increasing pay in order to have jobs?
We're not increasing, we're not decreasing.
We're not increasing.
Yeah, we're transferring some jobs.
Exactly the way you want us to.
Transferring to the.
The original thought was that the code enforcement work really only needs to be a half-time position. But, so that was the original thought process for lowering the position from full-time to half-time. But after the supervisor did a further analysis, it was determined that there are other tasks that he could be better utilized.
Because there's some other things that other people are doing that aren't being done very well that we can transfer over there. So.
Didn't you say something as well as about helping out parks?
Yes. You know, he's already been doing the sidewalk cleaning, which we're not going to be compensating for anymore.
Well, that's still in the budget.
But we anticipate that being taken out, frankly. But he's willing to work with them also when they need extra help. So we're gonna arrange for him to be working with the parks people in maintenance.
That might be something to look at. We did add $13,000 into the parks seasonal line for them to help with some beautification work. I don't know if this could be where maybe Tom can assist with that and maybe we wouldn't have to increase. I mean, it's obviously a higher salary to pay Tom to do whatever assistance with the beautification. But rather than, you know, a college kid or whomever. But that is a thought if you wanted to utilize him in that thing.
Well, the seasonal help was a little bit different. He has two heads that could then have, send one crew going out and doing one work. Right, then he can have a head guy with a seasonal, you know, college kid home for the summer. And then he has a crew going out. Then he can have another head guy from the department currently. And a seasonal help, which would be a college person or something. You have two crews going out, double the amount of work. So that was, that was the efficiency on that. I mean, you could speak to Don, where I said, really long conversation with him on how to get different crews out doing the work. And that's how he said he could do it because these head guys know what to do. But they just need the laborers to help them. Otherwise, it's two head guys, one is a laborer, one is a manager on the job. And that's not efficient at all.
Aren't we still increasing the labor at $13,000? I mean, I think if we do that, you gotta pull it away from somewhere else. I don't see how we could, with good conscience, everything we're going through, increase labor $13,000.
Well, I think the thought process for that is to not have a higher level employee, have a hourly guy doing the actual labor instead of your higher level. Remember, your parks department currently had, is understaffed. There's a vacancy and there's an individual who just had to leave because he's ill. So now we're two guys down.
Right, so we're not replacing this four.
No, I, no, I think they're in the budget.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, there's not, there's not, we're not replacing a higher wage with $13,000. We're just adding $13,000 to your labor.
For time, for, for time. That's all, for the man-hours.
Well, do you have anticipation of replacing those people from parks?
Yes, yes. Parks is, parks is having.
Do you need both of them? Do you need both of them?
Yes.
I think we should have a review on that.
What is their, what's the pay salary to replace them?
What was their positions?
Assistant Parks Foreman and a Parks Groundsman.
So they're both grounds people? So why can't Tom fill in for one of those?
Well, not full-time.
No, not full-time.
It's seasonal.
You really do need more help in the, in the, in the summer when you're rolling season and you're, just like you heard in the, the last town board meeting, you heard Highway's having a hard time getting the sides of the, of the roads mowed. You know, we, I think honestly, all the departments could use extra seasonal help for when their busy times are.
Well, I mean, it seems that, we're kind of bouncing all over the place here, but it seems that, you know, there's an issue with code enforcement. And, you know, the, I mean, we're trying to, you know, add things to that job to justify keeping that position. Maybe we shift him into another job and take those few responsibilities, you know, that he has and put down with the building, with the building inspectors, or with the animal control officer, you know. And you figure out a way to, instead of looking to build Boroni's job up, we ship Boroni to parks or something. And then maybe we separate those tasks. I mean, it's my understanding that we're not, there aren't that many citations being given anyway. And it's your belief that the, the level of activity is, you know, not that significant. I'm not, and I'm not commenting on the job. I really haven't been analyzing it. But I'm saying, it seems we're having this discussion and trying to build up this one position and we slot him in over there. And then into one of those roles, we look to, you know, to be, to remain responsibilities amongst, you know, building and, you know.
Yeah, you know, that might be a very good suggestion if you put code enforcement under one. Under one of the, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the sound. No, really, under one of the assistant building inspectors. Put the code, because we believe the code enforcement is only really a half-time job. Add those responsibilities, even if you equally share them amongst the others. And then, you know, if, if it works.
Yes, it's just, I mean, it's just, you know, I'm kind of sinking it as we're going along here, so.
I want to see what the differential in salary is, if it's a similar. Yeah, it is fairly, a Parks Groundsman and a and the, the code enforcement are about, you know, close to the same salary. So that is something.
The guy that we're gonna replace was at a lower salary anyway, so that would be a split, it would be halfway between where it is now.
So we can actually research that and have that for you guys next Monday, whether or not that's a feasible.
So at that point, we would, we would put Bill and Mike involved in code enforcement?
Yes, would that work?
I guess it works.
Well, probably, probably, it would probably be Bill. I mean, because Mike is kind of been acting.
He's the acting billhead.
Billing it, so, yeah.
I mean, they know the codes are.
And Bill, and actually, Bill is, does the fire codes anyway, right?
Yes.
One thing to think about, this is, we talked to a lot of people here in other towns. One of the reasons we have very few citations is we have somebody driving around in a truck that says code enforcement. And people know he drives around in it.
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think it's, I don't think the nature of that job is, you know, that you have to be driving around in a, you know, a vehicle that no one's gonna identify. If there's a code violation, you know, he's gonna drive that.
Well, I'm just saying, he, he does drive around looking for them. And if you give it to Mike, he's not necessarily gonna be out looking for code violations. He's gonna be out doing building inspections.
I said that's a bill, but.
I'm sorry, Bill. I know a lot of other towns who don't have somebody driving around. People go, we can do whatever they want in their houses. And they can do it openly. Do you ever have a problem?
And I know other towns that have one person in total that are our size. So if you wanted to comparison, you really should know.
What person that does what?
The building inspector, the code enforcement, the department head, you know, it's, we're not that busy. You know, we're not that busy. This certainly can be assimilated into one job. So we'll speak to them. They themselves know the job descriptions where, and we'll talk to them. But it's these type of corrections we have to make and we have to be strong about it and speak to them and make it happen. Because fitting a job to keep Tom Boroni in a position and making jobs for him to do. No, let's put him in a position that we really need, that we're looking for somebody. He knows the town. He knows his way around. Well, let's put him in something that works, but something that we feel we need, not build him up to keep it there.
I mean, even if it, even if it doesn't work, having Richardson or Cromwell do the code enforcement and we have to hire a part-time code enforcement officer, it still doesn't lay off work or cut some full-time employee here if we move him. And, and it achieves what we were looking to achieve in the budget as far as the reduction in the code enforcement salary.
Have the building inspector drive the code enforcement truck around and I see the truck in the community.
Slap into sign on.
That actually solves a problem too because we're short vehicles. There are times when both, both building inspectors need to go out. There's no vehicles. So, you know.
Well, to that point then, I think you gotta, it sounds like we're gonna have potentially some additional labor for parks. So I think we just remove that, there's a $13,000, which is a lot of money for two additional seasonals for parks, for beautification. And every one, ten of them look as great as they can. It looks good, but.
It's not for beautification. It's for them, it's for parks. And I don't want you to think they're doing this for beautification. It's parks.
That's the way, that's what I'm saying.
I understand.
It really is just for, that's the way.
It's not. It's their seasonal work that they do for the spring. It's in all the parks. They do the special, you know, work for seasonal.
So they have seasonal. We were, they have $25,000 in seasonal. You know what? You and I will talk to Don and find out how many of those 25, that 25,000 covers and what was the addition of the two. Because Don expressed to us it was just for beautification.
It was for a rectify.
And it's, listen, it's a, it's a noble request, you know. If they requested the additional labor, maybe you'd have to justify that unless you can actually show Don needs it for the, you know, season.
Especially if we hired 100 of the extra guys that we don't have now.
So I think you could just, it's a small number, but you can pick up $13,000 there. Joe, what about the other item we talked about and I sent you an email? I know you've started doing this, which is looking at expenditures that we can do in 12 instead of 13. If we have overages, if you're trying to get, he's trying to finish up, Faith's trying to get, finish up the projected 2012 where we are department by department. So if we have an overage, why not move an expense from 13 if we can?
You can only do that if.
You can only do that.
If we already incurred the expense, so we can't.
If the, if the product was ordered, if, and, and that's been a procedure here, which actually violates the state codes, is that your 2012 expenses should be your 2012 expenses. You know, anything you've incurred or ordered, or, you know, if we order the software, whatever it is, it's fine. But to backload a year, you know, it, it causes you problems in budgeting because you really do need to see actuals. What, what, what's the expense? There are some purchase orders going back to '09 that are still on the books.
I'll talk about this as a one-time expenditure, just like you said in that case, next year. Well, if we said in next year's budget, we want to do a resolution to spend some X on whatever, a truck or something. If we can do that, isn't the same as doing it this year? We said, we want to do a one-time expenditure, not a recurring expenditure.
And what, what benefit does that have?
It's exactly the same accounting wise.
You're pulling the expense off of the.
If you pull it out of fund balance. If you pull it out of fund balance next year and spend it next year, it's exactly the same effect.
Oh, okay, right. So.
Exactly the same effect.
Well, we are doing that with departments where, you know, they, they've ordered something and the bill isn't due to be paid until January. You know, if we have the services we're paying at next.
Yes. And my suggestion to Highway was fill the barns back up. You know, there are some, he, Highway appears to be underspent and I just wanted everybody to know that we were short on the bond. We borrowed, 2.1 million is supposed to go for the roads, but there was additional roads that were paved. So they purposely cut back their expenses to make up the differential for that capital project. But by the same token, anything that, if a department has additional funds this year, we're telling them to.
They actually shouldn't be short on the bond. Why, why are they short on the bond? We didn't do the front top coat in winter.
Right. They're, like, they're holding that money.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, saying.
So they better have some money on them.
No, 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 there is. And there's still money left in the vehicle purchases as well in the.
I think the barns, Faith and I talked about this in the Friday.
They're almost, well, yeah, they, they used a little bit for the last recent storm, but I mean, they have a few thousand dollars left.
Yeah, because they did that last year and then we ended up using a lot of.
We took them out with Coolos to get rid of them for one inch of frame in length, which was ridiculous, but.
Not necessarily a budget question. What has he done on that truck wash?
Nothing.
I, I've given him a 30-day window. I've given him directive to get that installed. The, just to let you guys know, the backhoe that they need to use to install that broke during the storm. So they were waiting parts to repair it. I anticipate it will be up and running by mid-January.
I'd like to have an inspection of all my trucks lined up. And I want to go through each one of the trucks and see what rust has occurred to them over the year because they did not put the truck washed. They got a new truck out of me last year, which was like, you know, hard. Yeah, the two, right? And now we have them not being washed for a full year. I think just like any other department, I think they should line the trucks up. We should do an inspection, not only of the trucks. I want to do an inspection of all of their tools. of their tools, their sheds, I want to go into every one of those buildings and see what do you have as inventory, I want to see your, your maintenance books for your logs, I want, you know, I know a lot about that, I worked at my father's construction company for 15 years, so I want to, I want to see every truck, I want to see every maintenance, I want to see what all the choosers, who's doing it, just like we do for the fire department. It's more fluff with the fire department because we're just working, but I really want to do that.
When, when do you, would you like to see that happen?
Any day, anytime I'm available and like for the board members to come with me, because I think every time you walk in, there's one more time to understand it.
So, so I would just say, I just wanted to get back on where we were on that budget number on parks, so, so if we, you're gonna investigate that, you know, with the code enforcement, so that potentially might save us about, you know, what was I saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be major.
But, so what that does is allow us not to increase the salary by that 44,000 and actually we could pull out the 36.
Plus, plus.
Yeah, we can actually pull out the 36 that's in there for the code enforcement part time, if we can shift Tom to Parks groundsman.
Yeah, I see plot, I mean, I'm not...
Um, I don't know, I don't know, it said non-competitive, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Well, it's okay.
But we...
I don't think that would be an issue, but usually we'll get to it.
And then the issue, the, the jobs that, tasks we were assigning, you know, with the existing plan we walked into, they will go back to whoever was doing the majority.
Correct, and, and I'll monitor those to make sure they're getting done.
As far as, you know, the detectives, I mean, I think that's just, you know, too, too, I agree with you, John, I mean, that's, you know, in the space between now and, you know, we submit the budget, that's just too, I mean, that's a complicated issue.
But we have to get it started, we wanted to do it last year, we didn't do it.
Well, we do and we spent the money actually on the police study, I think we really got it much.
But wasn't the detectives included in it, was there any summation of it?
No, it wasn't quite.
No, it was, it really wasn't, it was, it was just patrol, patrol staff and...
But that needs, I think we all agree on that, that's an area that could potentially be improved, but again, part of why we brought John here is to do that in a couple cities.
And it's complicated too, and that, that, to me, is a very complicated issue.
How do we maintain or improve the level of service at the same or less cost? If we can do that, then we have to be open to pay change.
But the department that you're referring to is library and that, I, I think we should have a, you know, a deadline in terms of when an analysis will be done by department, whether it's at the end of the first quarter, I mean, I know we're, we just keep plodding on the work here for you, John and Faith, but, you know, that, I know that's the department you've got concerns with, I have concerns also because I, you know, I think their, their role is changing and evolving and not, not that that's bad, I mean, I think a lot of the stuff, for example, I think the, you know, I've, I've had a real shift in my thinking on the programming, because I really, you know, if, if the, if the library, you know, can really drop the bus on the programming side, you know, we should be looking at, you know, parks, parks let them, let them do it.
It should be a collaboration.
Yeah, well, it should be, with, with that question, there should be more, we've tried to have them work more closely together, that hasn't really, they haven't really synced up for whatever reason, but I, I mean, Friends does a great service for the town by providing all this free programming and let, you know, I think the parks just has to understand that, you know, and allow them to keep going and just try to, you know, and maybe there's savings there, frankly, I mean, with the money that the Friends raise.
Well, I'm gonna bring up, I think we spoke to Howard, John and Faith, that I'm gonna bring up at the next library board meeting, the, what we've done in most of those departments, which is a total labor model, we're gonna decide, and to your point, John, I mean, is look at that, you know, you just, you need to look at numbers, you need to figure out what it's at, how much exact labor do you need and how much was the total labor that you have.
Well, yeah, 10, 10 full-time.
Mm-hmm.
10 full-time librarians.
We're gonna get two librarians.
Yeah, but what, I mean, we really have to look at the, that library.
Yeah, but once you look at it, once you lay it down, then you can see where there's a differential cluster lines, so, but we, it, you know, that needs to, that one department is where we haven't analyzed yet, we just need to do that work.
That's all.
So, I'll talk to their board about it, figure out what the best way to do it is, we deal with our board, you know, more than a ton, but, and I agree, the timing of it, if something like that, as we've done in other departments, shouldn't take more than a few months. I think if you have a tool in front of you, you say, okay, this is everything they need to do and this is the amount of labor that they have to do it, is there a better way to, they need all that labor, is a better way to stay up to labor, there's a lot of solutions right there, so.
So, Faith, are you keeping a running, running tally here?
I am.
So, where are, where are we right now? If we add, if we add, I had us at plus 36 and then if we add back a Baroni's salary, we take, we take those savings.
We take it away, right, so that's about 30...
So, it's about another 44.
Plus benefits, so...
There were, well, 36 plus, that's with benefits, so now it's minus 44.
So, that gets...
And then that 13K for parks is kind of on the fence right now, we're, we haven't committed to that yet, but we're gonna look at that as well, right?
270, so I have 277.
I think library could do one staffing adjustment now and I think that will bring us to where we could, I think we could speak to them, I think that makes sense.
I just want to question the board about coming in or do the cap, you know, you know, that ties your hands for the next year. Remember, the, the sticking point this year is the rate. Because of the lowered assessments, you're looking at a higher rate than, than we would normally feel comfortable with, but next year with the assessables coming in, you should be, you'll have a little bit, a more palatable tax rate increase. So, you know, you, the numbers that you're, you're talking about are gonna bring us well under the cap.
But you talked about $100, what, what does that equate to in terms of rate?
The, um, the $100 brings the rate down by about 1%, so it's from the, but then we have to add back the 50...
500,000 lower assessment.
For the tax assessment, so it's 4%, that's what the, what the tax rate increase would be at $100.
So, at 4%, it's about $100 a household if the average...
The median, it's like the last one hundred, right?
And it's at the 2% cap, 4% increase.
Yes.
2% levy, cap, 4% rate.
Oh, with the things we just talked about, I've got us net at...
It's gonna bring us less.
Well, yeah, I've got us net 80 to the positive without the 13, I didn't take, so I didn't...
I don't know why I have more, because I have, 146 was the gap, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I, I still, I have 184.
Because you had, oh, because we first...
Because we were...
You're right.
Because of the assessments and then, so then I have 140 coming out with the first pay increase, I have 30,000 or 50,000. I have 50,000 in the capital transfers.
So, I should pitch it to the...
And then 44.
Right. I'm making sense. I follow.
So, what was your number, John?
I thought, I thought it was 80 to the good.
All right, I had 93, so we're close.
That brings you down to 13.
I just, I didn't know what...
It brings you around to a 3.5.
Without the drop in the assessable number.
With the, right?
With the 500,000 drop, yes.
And then we're gonna ask the department, ask for 5% and then we'll decide whether we want that or not, you know, based on what they come back with. Do you have other, you have other items to do, right?
Yes, I do, I'd like for the town board to look at the pension contributions, we're doing it for town board members, I'm sorry to bring this up, but I just feel part-time employees are not entitled to a pension, so there's 12 right there.
If you knew that, why don't you ask the town board to give a 5% reduction like you're asking the department still can?
A town board member, they, they don't receive pension and healthcare, it's a four-year term and they're not asking anything of the town. I think for a town to have a liability of the pension, we did the healthcare, now we have a pension to work on. I'd rather us talk in a, in a smaller meeting session than in a larger forum, and that's what we're doing today. I signed, I wouldn't take the pension or the healthcare and I'd like for the town board to do that unanimously.
How much is that, John?
That's what I was just gonna tell you. The retirement system is 9,000 for the town board members.
So, that's 18,000, so I guess?
No, that's...
No, 9,000.
A total?
John, what is the percentage this year?
It's about 19%, right, Faith, for ERS?
Uh, yes. I have, I don't remember, please, I don't...
Right, so there are two?
There's two of them.
Yeah, two, so it must be about 40, whatever, 4,000 something.
And with the 5% reduction, just, you know, give another 3,600.
What are you talking about, 5% reduction in salaries?
In salary.
It'd be more than that, wouldn't it?
Probably just a 5%, that's a number.
18, it's just 18.
Well, how are you calculating it, social security and...
No, I'm not, no, I'm not.
So, what are the thoughts on that, guys?
I'll tell you my, my opinion, I have, I have researched this since January and I have considered dropping out of pension system. I was looking at the numbers, quite honestly, I don't know if I'll be around old enough to get a pension, so, if it is a savings of about 4,500 to the town, it's something I would consider.
Wonderful.
But I would like to do it, not as part of, we could talk about it later on privately, I don't want to have to, you know, make big public spectacle about this, I don't want, you know, I'm not doing this magnanimously, I'm not doing this, I just want to, I want to do the right thing, but I don't want to do it in public form to, to talk about it.
Why don't we have that conversation in private, right?
Yeah.
That's a simple one.
And Michael, you should, you should come close.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it, talk about it priorly. There's two other slightly larger items for, rest in revenue numbers, and John, we talked about this, we have the recording tax at 650, I accepted that email, I can't be comfortable with pushing it up, but I think you're hesitant to push some of those revenue numbers up.
I am.
Same thing with building fees, I think I sent, I don't know if I sent it to everybody, the, where, if you look at year-to-date, you sent it there? So, in year-to-date, if you pull out that big chunk from the assisted living, we're tracking to about 525 for this year, we've blanked it in. I wasn't sure if we had that 450 plus 50 to get us to 5, so it might be an extra room, about 25 grand in revenue there we could project, but again, if you're hesitant to increase revenue numbers, then let's just leave it the way it is, because it's close enough where we're probably gonna be right, you know, to, to 15, 25,000 year-to-date.
The issue is if any of your revenues come in short, you know, I'd rather have room in your major revenues to absorb that, in the event, in the event.
Right, and we've been pretty good the last few years of, of conservatively budgeting our revenue numbers and it's worked. So, if we want to stay that course and keep the mortgage tax at 650 and keep the, the building fees where they are, I think they were at...
They're 425 and 60.
And 50?
425 and 60.
60, so I get you a 45.
Right.
Right, sorry, 45, so, I was saying...
160.
permits other.
Those the inspection fees or just permits other?
I'm not sure.
There's another one for inspection, because every year we always had the number, like 450 and then 50, and I wasn't sure what other 50 was in this budget, I saw our 50 on tour inspections.
We just had a report from the building ins, from that department.
For the year-to-date?
Yeah.
But that, there's a separate number there, not in that sheet, because that sheet...
Right, oh, no, that, that sheet should have it.
No, that's everything.
That's everything.
And that coming in at 630 or something.
Well, that's because of that one.
That's because of that one big hit. Yeah, 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 and that's like a 200,000 positive variance in this year, it's another reason why we're so over, because of that, you know, that one big shot.
Would we have that coming up though with Brentwood?
I doubt it.
They may not convince you.
Yeah, we just can't predict that, like, we didn't predict that one and it came, which is great, so it's extra revenue, you just gotta be careful that you don't, and it's non-recurring.
We gotta see, we'll see, yes, right, there'll be some fees associated.
Not as much though.
Not too much, I don't think.
It's not around, it's not around that construction.
Yeah.
We just want to be careful when we do a non-recurring revenue, we don't want to...
You don't actually want a budget on recurring.
Yeah, I don't want to put it in there. Ones that we know, if we're gonna average 40,000 a month at the billing department, that's fine.
Right, that's the, that's the...
We're gonna average sales tax, mortgage tax, fine, but I don't want a, a, a project of aberration, that's all. So, anyway, those are the two other items that if we, they may come in higher, but if you're comfortable at the numbers you're at, let's leave it the way it is and that leaves the levy where it is. So, okay, so I'm just gonna, not gonna make any adjustments for this.
Because actually this year, we're, we're not 197 favorable, we're, we're only 11 and 5K favorable, so...
The billing department fees? But then we budget...
We budgeted 425 and 60.
And 50 and 60.
And we're right now at 333 and 57.16.
But that's without that 200,000 chunk.
And then we're budgeting rest of year with a 196.8, so that brings us 100, 105 favorable, not 100, it's not the full 196 that were favorable.
I thought we were right there, I thought we were tracking right, right to that number. Thought I had it, okay. All right, well, regardless, if we're not gonna change the revenue number, then we'll just, we'll just... There's no gain in the cleaning company, right? It's just the improvement of service, there's no...
Well, there might be some part-time hours in park and recreation that can be transferred over to parks or, you know, I don't know, I'll, I'll look into that to see if that's something.
That's not a change, really.
No, well, no, you're right.
Well, he does, doesn't he, he, does the buildings?
Library and, it's one building.
No, I thought that, who does the cleaning in Northwide?
It's a part-time guy, it's not, it's not, no, it's not the full-time.
Is it Mike? Is it Mike who was there last night? Did he do it?
Oh, was that Ralph or Stan? Yeah, Ralph, that's Ralph.
Do you anticipate the, preemptive any of bands or any lessening of interest expense for next year, is that...
If there's enough, if we're comfortable with the fund balance, that might be my suggestion when we renew the bands in April, we may pay some of them down. Now, the, the long-term bonds have obviously a higher interest rate than the bands, but it costs you money to refinance them where the bands are easy, you know, to, to lower it, you just pay more principal on it.
How much, what do you think, could you estimate what it'll cost to refinance them?
We could do that.
Because if we refinance them, we go through another review.
Yeah, and then you get the Moody's review, you possibly get the AAA back.
Yeah, so there might be an offset if we do get the AAA back, then you're gonna pay slightly less interest, maybe a half, it might pay for itself.
Maybe you add that among, you know, the list of projects that we want to, you know, include that as a project potential, or potential allocation.
Because that would force them to do the review, because...
Now, I'm pretty comfortable we're not gonna get lower, there's no guarantee we'll get back to where we were, but we've been on that path and they kept telling us the Now, I'm pretty comfortable we're not gonna get lower, there's no guarantee we'll get back to where we were, but we've been on that path, and they kept telling us the last reviews, you gotta maintain, you gotta maintain it, well, we've been maintaining it and improving it, so, I'm hopeful that we're close to that, and it might be a reason to do a refinance versus a, you know, a band, so.
Especially if you possibly take down a part of it in the refinancing, which would-
Send a good message.
Positive, yeah.
Uh, one of the income things I wanted us to consider, Tim Shea, the Longmont Tennis, is interested in putting another bubble. And I'd like, that's real money, I mean, we make good money with that.
Where would that go?
Uh, with the paddle tennis courts.
Because in, uh, they're, they're licensed, oh, you're saying, you're saying we're gonna touch it?
No.
It's not something, it's, isn't something we put in the budget.
No, but I think I'd like for us to look at these income sources.
We're gonna have, we're having a meeting, we had a, Sue Snyder, the NSM College of tomorrow, and had a discussion.
Oh, you did, good.
Well, we, we agreed here with his license agreement, we've got some, actually, we should loop you in on that, too. And I don't know if they've set up a meeting with Shea yet to talk about that, but-
Okay, good, because I know he's interested, and he's asked many times in the past for us to prepare ourselves for this possibility, because he'd like to do it, and that's real money. And it's a service to the community, so it's, you know, plus and both, and it's not taking away a field, it's a field that's not being used, it's an empty spot next to the paddle tennis courts. So redo that building, which we wanted to do many times, and then add another bubble, connect all three together. So that's, that's a nice service.
So you would, what happened with that building, with the buildings?
He would renovate it, no, he would renovate it.
And then you just use all that grass?
He could probably-
The grass area, well, that's what he said he would do, and he'd speak to us, he's, many options of how he could renovate it and what to do. Plus, he'd also repave the parking lot for us and create a bigger circle where that turnaround is always so tight, when you go drop your kids off. You know, you're dodging cars as you're doing it.
Then just, then people sit there and look at the case.
Right, so he would create a better circle, so, you know.
Just another place for him.
Can we move those out?
Wouldn't have any impact on the-
You can, you can move that place, you can.
It would improve.
People use those, yeah. Right, we play, don't you, a basketball?
Well, they haven't been upgraded for a long time, in East of March.
It hasn't been upgraded?
Outwards, we actually went through analysis of fixing them up this year, about twelve thousand dollars, and we just didn't do it. You know, the screen's weird.
That's a new one, Carl.
Uh, about fifty.
Maybe a sponsor. Two months ready? Renovated by? I'm sure there'd be somewhere we could always move those to-
One of the announce, one of the announce societies that's gonna come up is our garbage contract is coming up, so that should be a very consuming item, I definitely wanna be on that committee, because I know a lot about it. Um, that's a big budget, that is a million years, so it's coming up, and we have the changes we're gonna be doing. So I'd like for us to put that on the list of focus for this coming year, and see how we could, that's a possible savings that could happen for us, we've done very good with recycling, and as you know, we pay by the tonnage for waste. So our tonnage of waste has gone down dramatically because of the efficiencies, so in the future, that could be a savings for us.
So, uh, to get back on the budget, so you don't wanna do anything with the revenue items, Mike, because I identified one with-
I wouldn't.
So then, where does that leave us now, over, over, three, three and a half percent, is that what you're saying?
I would go below that eight K.
Faith and I will have to put the numbers in. Should be pretty close to that.
And that's with the reduction of five hundred dollars?
Yes, yes.
So if you didn't reduce the assessables, which I'm not sure, you'd be under three. So the reality of that is, it's, it's, it's either gonna happen or it's not, whether we do anything or not, and if, if it does come in lower, and, and when we get the tax bills, it'll be higher because there was an adjustment, so.
Technically, um, the, the assessment right now is actually higher than the assessment we used for the budget because of changes in exemptions, so-
Oh, right.
You know, the, the assessment number is a fluid number, it moves, you know, usually, it's been my experience, you use the assessment number at the time that you adopt the budget, this is the number we have, this is the number we know.
Right.
But you can certainly be proactive and, and lower that, because it's only being more conservative.
Aware of this now versus low down budget.
So if we, if we, if we decide not to lower it, then we're gonna come at three percent, you're saying?
Or under, probably under three.
John, what's the downside to coming in well into the ten percent cap in future years?
Because you're limited to a two percent increase on a lower number, you know, it really depends.
It limits your flexibility next year.
Yeah.
It's just using multi-year planning.
Right, because I'm saying, you know, I know we wanna keep it low, but do we wanna keep it so low that we lose next year?
But now, did we get a credit from what we didn't use last year?
Not, yes, but you don't get the growth on that.
And the calculation changed, you're on there, so last, you need, you, you can't necessarily bank on that being the case next year, but they seem to change the calculation every year, I'm not sure-
I know, they change rules every year.
And remember, you know, the cap this year, nothing else changed, the pension and the healthcare ate your whole cap, and more, more than that, so, you know, you have to become creative and look for more and more cost savings just to get under the cap. So, um, you know, it's, it's challenging, it's, when you, when you walk in, you know, it's like having your hands tied behind your back and asked to do a pull-up.
When you, when you play around with the, uh, the assessment, you affect the school taxes, that's bounced back, but a lot of bad repercussions on that, I'll send you paper, I'll put together on that.
We're not, we're not touching the assess-
No, no, this is just what's, what's projected in the budget, has nothing to do with the, we don't set, we don't arbitrarily set the actual, the actual's the actual.
And by the time the school budget goes through, they know what the actual number is.
Yes. Right, and by, by the same token, they, the school district uses the number as, on the frozen roll as of June one.
Right.
Because they don't, and they, then they just budget for tax refunds, which is what we can do, you know, as well, if you wanna talk about a rate, keeping the rate lower, you know, you can put a little extra money in the refunds, because that's really the conversation that Vicky and I and Faith had, is where do you come out by the time the taxes are levied in April, when you know, in May, in March, when you know there's still gonna be, you know, nine months of activity in that, in the, the tax certs? Where are we gonna, what are we gonna need, what kind of resources are we gonna need to pay off those refunds that are authorized by the courts? So you can do it either way, you can lower the assessment, or you can bounce a little bit more money in those refunds, it's a little bit more favorable because it comes out with a lower tax rate?
And does, if we budget money for refunds, does that go against the two percent tax?
Sure does.
Yes.
So we could do, we could do all this, we could bring the two percent tax, the number for the two percent cap up, but keep the rate lower because we're not deducted.
Closer to the two. Yeah, that actually might be a good-
Can you look at that both ways?
Say again?
If we, say with, this number, we're talking at ninety-three thousand under the cap right now.
Right.
Just say we budget ninety-three thousand for refunds, we don't have to reduce our assessables as much as five hundred thousand. It increases, we get the maximum cap debt, we still lower the tax rate overall. Correct?
Right, yeah, right.
So we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, so whether you wanna put it in the rate or you wanna put it in the overall levies.
Well, again, if the goal is to keep the levy as high, as high as legally possible, so next year, we're not hamstrung by spending, then, you know, we could just maybe adjust the assessables to one to fifty thousand, and we get the rate down, plus still keeping the spending.
There's no, there's no change to the taxpayer.
No.
No.
I'll need, just to go back to the parking staffing again, so, if we're able to do this with Barone, you say one body, then there's another body in there?
The assistant department.
Assistant department, I mean, maybe, and that's that block that's the center.
What's done, what's done?
Department.
Um, it's about eighty thousand, that's a top step with longer.
Eighty thousand plus, uh-
Benefits.
So a hundred and twenty.
But remember, that's what Diane was talking about before, there's two head guys that go out with two crews, your foreman and the assistant foreman, they run separately. Rather than send everybody out in one truck, but-
That's what they're trying to do, they're trying to get more work done with management, they're gonna have a crew, and you can speak to Don Brandis, but if he sends the two head guys out, you know, they're paying so much money for one crew, labor.
Well, I mean, I, you know, that, some, a lot of their work is so seasonal, I mean-
It is.
Wouldn't we almost be better, I mean, even if we just defer, I mean, not as soon as the January first hire, anyway, right, so, if, e- even if we wanted to do that job, we plan on not hiring at least until midway through the year, and I'd rather put like ten, part-time, you know, seasonal help towards that hire college kids and do that stuff.
Well, that goes contrary to putting Barone, who's a foreman.
No, no, I'm saying, I, I, I don't wanna, there's, there's a certain amount of work that they have to get done, and they're limping along now, I mean, um, so I, I, I mean, I think you have to fill some of those slots for, I don't, I'm not suggesting for a minute that that department can all be part-timers, but I think they're, you know, I mean, that's a very expensive position, I mean, you know, checking a hundred and twenty thousand benefits.
If you put Barone, if you put Barone in, and you have four, um, groundsmen, so that's two crews that I think can be built, you know, right, and then if you use the eighty thousand to just do something, you know, with seasonals, then that could be some savings.
I actually have a meeting set with Sue Snyder about taking over some of the responsibilities of the Parks Department. One of the problems that Don has is that he's inside doing paperwork, he's trying to handle administrative tasks that really want him, him out.
That's where we're gonna get the, the benefit of the software, I mean, that frees up the office staff, they can, they can take on his admin.
So faith and help. Right, right.
He's complaining to us that he has no admin support, now, he, he doesn't, but that will allow, you know, that's gonna be a huge burden lifted for most people, I don't have to do that, you know, the registration.
I may potentially have three crews that would go out.
And that's why it's Parks and Recs, they really have to work together, you know, one admin and then, you know, Parks goes out and does their work, so I think that's a good, a good mix for those two departments to be together with the admin.
Then that you need to, tell me to look at, and John, you can take this on your, like, too, but again, it's far away.
I'm moving on the second page.
No, no, it's far away here, is we, we started working towards a true DPW, and Mike Richardson's working on one lady, you know?
Right.
Okay, if we do power labor. We've gradually gotten away from that, but what we're talking about gives that all merit, because if you have overstaffing in one department in a season, it could be used to help the other department, and the other department in off-season can help the other department, that's what we should be doing, so we're not, we're not splitting hairs about,
How many there are?
You've got a department head, who's got too much administrative, well, why can't that administrative be shared amongst all of those departments, and then you have the labor that could be shared, so if you need a few more here, and we've done it to an extent, Parks has helped do snow removal, we've had highway guys sometimes helping them, but we need you to dig on, in on that, not, you know, tomorrow, next week, but we need you to dig on that and look at the whole picture.
Yeah, process a little bit.
Okay, how is this, how can we run this more efficiently once you load all the labor hours in together?
Well, you know, and we, that, this storm was a perfect example, we had Parks with Highway for a couple weeks, and now we have Highway with Parks, clearing the parks, and, you know, so.
Perfect.
And we even have building people and some-
Yeah, yeah.
And the final thought is something I had emailed to, was talking about the secretarial staff, that if we had a more centralized phone number, each department is keeping a secretary staff there throughout the day so that they could have someone there to answer the phone. So then it goes to the manager who's, you know, needed in that department, but if we had a centralized phone number, each had the one person answering the phone, and it goes directly to the department head or the person in that department, instead of keeping another secretary on staff just to answer the individual phones.
Well, that goes to a new phone system that we're-
And I think that's a project to look at for this coming year, because the secretary of staff compared to new phone system, we'll see the savings there, and I think it's more efficient. I think for the residents to call one phone and request one for Highway, two for this, and then it goes directly to that person, you know, the Highway.
John, are you familiar with the three-one-one system?
No.
And there might be some grant money to have a, an analysis, look at it for the town, where that becomes the phone number for the town, and the calls go in to that number, it's a central dispatch, and then they ask for, they go out to where they're supposed to go to, they don't have to go to one person and then go to the next person, they all go into the main, um, main feed. So, and there has been some grant money around studying, I think it may depend on how big your town is, but there's been some grant money, and you study that, they come in, pay for it, the study's done, and you get the recommendation, whether the system and that makes sense. So, and we've seen in municipality in Mulholland, it did it, and it's-
Is that state, state?
Law of state, it's through state, um, Secretary of State's office up there.
Okay.
Local government efficiency, they have this going, so.
You know, I'm in different towns all the time, I'm going to departments because of the type of business I'm in, and a lot of them have all their departments there, and they just have, you know, the secretarial staff that's there.
Front counter.
A front counter for everybody, we have front counters for each department, so, you know.
Part of that is our space.
I understand, the configuration of our space, but, you know, as, as much as we can help that, and then it, it, the secretarial staff is, is shared.
Yeah.
And they're knowledgeable, and they're polite, and they answer the, and it helps the department people from never having to come out of their office to be the front person while someone, oh, they're sick that day, this, it's a secretarial staff that's shared, it's set, and it also makes each department more efficient, because they know they don't have to get involved with being at the front window and, and answering, um, the questions, the secretarial staff, because they are, they're trained to do that, but I think in the long run, it's a tremendous savings, and it's very efficient for the customers to come in, uh, as is realtors and, and probably also the town people, you go there and you know you had everybody in front of you, so, um, it's something to look at, it really would be a very big savings.
I can realize we still call them secretaries.
Well, it, it actually is, it's the CSN, the tennis, what are their titles?
Clerk.
Let's, um-
Clerk.
Just go back to focus on the, just focus on the budget here.
But that is a large percentage of the budget, staffing is stacked in hardly.
Any suggestions or thoughts?
I think we're covering a lot of ground today.
Yeah.
Yeah, Faith and I have a lot of work to do.
Digest everything we've thrown at you.
We're gonna have the, the projected, um, you know, the, the more current year-to-date for the entire budget by department, or the projected twelve, so you think we're gonna have it before next Monday? I know you've been waiting for information from the department as it finishes.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I, so I was focusing on general highway and library, just because that's where, I think it's gonna be.
Yeah. And I was focused on that, if that makes sense.
Right, and then, so I have this breakdown, you know, of the actual spend for all the departments, um, and we put a freeze on, you know, purchasing essentials, so we really shouldn't be, um, seeing too much.
Faith, did you share that with the board?
I, I sent it around, I have a copy of these, too, if anyone's-
That's actuals till, to what date?
This is, this is current, so the, um, the rev, the revenue is, is a little bit of a lag, but the expenses are all, are all current.
So the bills, probably through the end of, no, probably through, it's the end of October, I would say, because it takes a little while for the bills to filter into us.
So unless there's some late seasonal one-time purchase, so we could project that those are gonna-
Faith and I spent a lot of time checking the accuracy of these, so they should be pretty, pretty quick.
And this is by department?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Is our, uh, my software on there?
What?
My thirteen thousand, that's what it is, right?
Yes, it should be, but, you know, there's a problem with that, we're still working, there's a compromise on intent, yeah.
I know, you got it, I'm not done, sure.
This is what Parks own?
Yes, but if I'm on-
It's, uh, it's in, should be on the recommendation.
So this is revenue and this is expenses?
Oh, you did, um, Faith, you have everything not by the departments, but by, uh-
I have it by general, my library.
Right, and you have it by, um,
I have.
By salary, salary, of course, all general departments, you don't see it by department, right?
It's not by-
Yeah, I tried to put together just a high level summary so we could really see what, what the drivers were, we can drill, drill down as, as deep as you wanna go, then it becomes, you know, a multi-page report, I just wanted to kind of keep that.
No, I don't think this is good, so what I'm driving at is, you know, when you go from department to department, there are certain lines, non-labor, there are certain lines that say, okay, that line was budgeted for forty thousand this year, they spent thirteen, they might be ruined in this year, next year's budget, because they didn't spend to that number. You know, and they didn't need, I shouldn't say that, they didn't need it, so, I don't wanna re-budget to that previous budget number if the actual need is gonna be less, and you know if the actual need's gonna be less if they didn't spend in the current year, that's all. Unless there's some time, like, late year, one-time purchase that just wasn't made, but there's need.
Right, and we, yeah, we tried to do that, we, we went through that same thought process for ADL for all the departments, and that's where we, you know, that's where we came up with, uh, as a figure out-
Okay, so I'll look at the variance, because the variance column's the last column, right?
Yeah.
The actual number, okay, so I'll look at that, and then I'll get sort of pinpoint.
John, Jen, just, you know, mention this, because I'm, I see a line, I don't know if that's making sense, but the dare officer, um, that, you know, I, I know that the chief was correct when he told us that had to be a uniformed, uh, officer filling that function, I don't think that's right at all.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think he meant to say it had to be-
And I don't think we should, I don't think we should, that's the direction we should go, and I really, it seems awfully expensive.
I don't think anyone's doing that job now.
Well, no, we're, we're borrowing from the town, you said, Mount Pleasant, but, I mean, we had, who was in it, Mike, before Wes was there, it was, um-
Officer Frank.
Right, officer Frank.
Officer Frank.
He spent, like, a lot of his time on that, I mean, he was, I don't know if he was full-time, but pretty much full-time, he was a full-time uniformed officer, you know, that's an expensive way to-
Now, there, there is a way to possibly force share that there are school resource officers, there are dare officers, you know, we can ask the school if they'd like to, to share the expense with us, I think that, you know, I mean, it, it technically, the taxpayer's still paying for it, whether we're paying for it, the school district, but, yeah.
Well, I don't even know if you need an officer, though, I had a, I don't know.
Well, we talked about a, a part-time retired police officer, so we've, we've heard that, we can't, I just, I need to see legally that, we can't do that, I'd rather have a-
Retired person or-
Yeah, it's something that will-
They just have, they have to certify.
Part-time, retired police officer.
This is a fifth grade program? You know, the school resource officers have to be officers, because they, their, their whole purpose is to assist the police with the communication with the youngsters and, and to avoid issues in the future, you know, the dare program is more of an educational program, it's, it's teaching them, so, you know, I, I do agree with you, and I can speak with the chief, and see.
I know the answer's always been it needs to be a, a uniformed police officer, but we should just be able to find out legally, could we have a retired police officer do it on a part-time basis?
I think they'd like.
I think that's a better way to, I think, trying, it's gonna be a difficult thing, I think, to start to pull out of the school to have a shared, um, like an IMAs there, because there's a lot of things that we do now that we use the schools, like fields and stuff, that there aren't charged back for, so we just, that's a, that's a whole different conversation on this one, if we, if we continue to do it the way we're doing it, and it costs less, then-
Well, even if we just continue to share it with another town, that's a savings.
Probably that too, yeah.
If we just do that.
It's not a full.
Mount Pleasant.
And also, don't the Hawaiians Club donate towards that?
Hawaiians Club, fire those preschool associates.
But it's all, you know.
Preschool associates.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't cost a lot, yeah. I mean, if we could chair another town, that would be.
Well, what's the, what's the percentage of, of the officer's time that he spent doing that?
Do we know?
Substantial.
A lot, but they're doing, now we're doing it, sharing it, so if we can just keep going that path.
We, you know, we've talked about the whole part-time police officer thing. Have you done any looking at that?
I haven't gotten any.
Oh, come on.
Go away, go away.
No, yeah, more, more important part-time is if we get hard, hard part-time officers instead of having.
To fill in, especially when we have a staffing shortage.
Yeah, especially like now, now two guys.
Right.
It's a lot better than that. Well, I mean, the two, in addition to the two old spots.
Michael Richardson's a good resource for that. Are you gonna page three yet?
I'm getting there, very quickly. I thought it was gonna be a slow week. There's no such thing. I don't wanna ask if there is anymore, I don't think they might have enough time for any more.
Yeah, so I will send out, I've taken notes on everything we've discussed, so I'll just put it in email.
So that if we miss any, I'll just.
No, I, just before we quit, I'd like to ask anybody who published, the two public here, if they have any ideas, since this is a public meeting.
Thank you for the opportunity. I can tell you, sitting at this meeting, I'm more disgusted there than we probably thought.
Sorry, I asked.
If you asked, I'll give you a question. As a citizen in the town, I think it's, I'm very discouraged by the process that they face, I'm very discouraged. I think from the taxpayer's point of view, and the largest taxpayer in the town, I don't think you've got, anyone here has done their job, perfectly frankly. It's the administrator work from the permissible tax cap and work backwards from that, using that as the baseline, and I think that's absolutely wrong. I think from the taxpayer's point of view, your job is to be able to spend money as efficiently as possible, and to represent the community and to spend its money wisely, and to look at ways of saving money and ways of increasing revenue. I didn't hear one of them today, that one. And at the town board meeting, I gave four or five different suggestions of saving money, and none of increase in revenue, and I don't think anyone but one was addressed. So I don't think you took the time to even think about it, and it's discouraging. And I'm gonna reiterate them, and I don't know if this is on camera, whether it is or it isn't, I don't think that matters. But one issue that I came up with today is an increase in revenue, which is discouraging to nobody boil any of them up, and it's minor. We have a parking lot.
Those, excuse me, Mike, all those ideas have already been looked at, that's why they weren't discussed here, and actually are under under review.
We have a whole folder.
We didn't, we don't have, this is, that's not the purpose of this meeting, go through every single thing, those things are long discussed and analyzed, so it's not as if we didn't think of them, we couldn't possibly go through every item that we've analyzed and looked at, and in fact.
Well, if that be the case, can you give us the review of what the increase in revenues are gonna be and how they came about?
I can't do it today, but I can do it.
Okay, so that, to me is, and, and if you have done that, and I don't know about it, then I, I'm embarrassed about it, but how does the public know of what you looked at to increase revenues? So maybe a report should go out of how and where is revenues being increased, and how and where are expenses being reduced? And maybe then I wouldn't be as upset as I am. And maybe if you have discussed them in other places, how is the public to know that? So, I, I heard some numbers come out here today, so maybe a, a report that somebody could prepare, whether it be Joan, how from last year are we increasing revenues, and from last year's budget, where are we reducing expenses? And that would be a recap at this point. And you know what, I'd love to see that prior to the next budget hearing, which is, I think is next Monday, and maybe if I can have that by Wednesday or Thursday, so we can have a couple of days to review it, so the public has the upper period. And maybe we then can come up with additional suggestions, both on the income side and on the expense side, that you might not have thought of.
I think that's a great idea. Because you're right, that people don't know all the areas we're investigating.
So, I, I think if we could have, if the public, if you can make that available on a website, by Wednesday night, so that the, the public has Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and then attend the meeting on Monday, and see if there are any other additional income or expenses that we maybe ever come up with, and suggestions. But I also am offended by the, that the start point seems to be the 2% cap that the state has infringed upon us, the towns, that that's the most amount of money. That isn't the way to look at it. What I think has been remiss from this town for the last six years, from the last two administrations, is you always start from this budget and work forward from that. That isn't the way to go. You should start from zero and rebuild it from day one, because I think over the course of years and years and years, things are being done because that's the way they were done last year. And we're gonna do it in this year because that's the way we did it last year. That's not the way to do it.
No, Mike, what you're saying is called zero-based budgeting, as you know. And unfortunately, in government, which I've learned, because I always did zero-based budgeting, running my own business, that should probably do with yours. Is that in government, there's so much fixed mandated expense, it really doesn't work the same way.
Well, use that as the start point, and the things that you can't fix, you have to maintain them and leave them the same. But the things that aren't mandated, you start from zero and work your way back up. Imagine with that, you have fixed expenses that you can't change.
But I'm just saying, it's a very small percentage.
But that's 50 or 60% of the budget, how much of that is?
More like 20 or 30%.
Okay, so whatever that is.
Very small percentage, which you really can do that with.
Okay, so whatever it is, you can't fix what you can't fix, but you can fix what you can fix, or at least have the opportunity of looking at it.
Yes, well, I think, I think.
Those organizations start at zero, and I believe it's the police, it's the library, I'm, I'm appalled to, to see what's being spent on a library, I'm appalled to believe what, what, what you're not even considering, shared services in the police department. In newspaper, two or three days ago, you saw that the West Side County now allows detective services or other services to be done by the county. That's something that this town should look at. There's one thing that you're forgetting about the whole basic principle about taxes. As you increase taxes, your property value decreases. And I, and I said at the last meeting, our property values in this town has depleted over the last six years very significantly because of what I consider to be mismanagement, okay? And that's why I'm putting the time in, because I'm not happy to see my real estate values decrease because of mismanagement and efficiency. And I'm gonna work as hard as I can, and I'm gonna be the biggest pain in your backside to get, to get the, the, the property values in this town where they should be, where they were when I came to this town. And for the last six years, we've been mismanaged. And that's, that's the conclusion. So I'm looking forward to getting your report on Wednesday night, and I will be back at the next meeting, and, and I'm gonna do my part to see that our property values in this town are increased, and that the money that you people spend was spent efficiently.
And I'll be doing, and I'll be doing the same thing for the schools.
And I, believe me, I am. Believe me, I am, that's another joke. Spending $30,000 for a student in our community to get educated is absurd. And I'll, I'll submit some things written for me. But anyway, thank you for the opportunity, giving me the opportunity to comment on your performance. Thank you.
And Joan, you comfortable with the capex number now, I guess it was 269, right, in this budget?
Oh, you mean transfer to capital.
Right. So if it was 269, does that, the 50,000, does that reduce it?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So it'd be 219. Okay.
Correct.
But we're still spending the money, we're just.
Do it differently.
Okay.
Right.
And there's no allowance in this budget for bonding, per se?
There's no increase in.
In investments.
Right, in, in principal or interest for any sort of short-term bonding or long-term.
There's also no allowance for. For any additional legal fees.
No, there is no.
It's unfortunate we have these legal fees coming in front of us with such a tight year of a budget, we have to pay these legal fees to defend ourselves unnecessarily.
It is, and hopefully that'll be resolved quickly with not too much expense, but it is unfortunate that we have that issue.
How would we pay for them then? And if we know that it's gonna be there potentially, then how do we not budget for it?
Well, if, as with anyone, with any department, if the, the expenses exceed, you would have to go up to fund balance or, or secure savings in other parts of the budget. Right now, you have 310,000 budgeted in legal, for outside legal, for litigation, we don't have anything specific for litigation, but in total, that includes the town attorney's retain and all that, is 310,000. 2012, probably, what, what did you, um, do you have a legal, we did it, the projection?
Yeah, legal fees are 261.
And this year we're budgeted 335. Last year, 2011, we spent 330. We're just keeping it in line with.
This, this year you're projecting 265?
We're, we're projecting to be in line with the budget, which was 261.
So I would think that if you have 330 for next year.
310, 310.
You, you have some coverage there.
We have a little bit of, but, you know, if you have significant bills, you'll be over.
But wait, what, so I thought we didn't include any other foreseen expenses in legal, so why would we?
We didn't, but you always have a stagnant amount for any type of outside legal that comes up.
Oh, okay, okay.
So there's, there's 125,000 there, I don't know, 2011, you spent 180, this year you spent 75, you know, that number varies.
So last year we budgeted 261.
No, in 2012, the original budget was 335.
The adjusted budget was 261.
It says some original budget, 261, I'm a mess.
Or it says original?
No, the, yeah, the original budget, oh, I'm just looking at general fund, are you working?
General fund, town attorney, and the 2012 original budget here says 335, 833.
Okay, I'm looking at this.
Remember, that was budgeted before we went out to RFP on that. 2012 budget was set from the year before.
Right.
And then I went out with RFPs, which saved us quite a bit of money.
I think it went down that much, I think it went down, like.
10%.
18,000 or something.
Mike, there's a 50,000 contingent legal expense budgeted.
Yep.
50 last year, 50 this year.
So we're covered, we're pretty well-covered.
Okay.
And we did have an Article 78 that this, beginning this year, so we're so equal.
Okay.
So to answer your question, there's some money, you know, but we'll see what, what happens.
I'd be comfortable with that.
I just wanted to make a comment, although contrary to the comments that were made, we don't do this backwards, the tail doesn't wave the door. Your expenses, your budgets are driven by your expenses. You know, you come up with the number that you have to spend, and then you try and find the revenue, when that, when you run short of revenue, then you have to go back and, and cut positions or, you know, and that's what we do.
To look at if you're at zero, how do we operate the town? What are you, what are you giving up? Are you cutting a few minutes, but so you're doing things that you really can't do, and then you go from there. I don't disagree with what he said, and I don't think any of us disagree in this room. It could be zero or below, or, but you gotta be where you need to be, and you, and we're going, working towards right size in the town, there's still some more work to do, but I think the approach is right, it just, you know, to cut out what were the $3,000.
It's a very different system that we work under than private. I mean, if you have an inefficient employee in this private company.
Just let them go.
You change that.
Yeah, or if the work's not there, reduce your labor.
Exactly.
For us, we can't say, we're not gonna plow banks full of shit, that doesn't happen here, plow every single road, you know? We can't, we can't close doors, we can't.
But I do think, pointing out the areas that we are working on and have made changes, almost like redlining what we've done.
Yeah.
Is a good idea, because we were, we're the only ones that know that, so.
And yet now we have a full-time person here who nothing but find ways to save us money. Right?
Right.
Well, let's not put that burden on him and her shoulders, find all these ways, and it's not her, she's trying to find ways to save money. But you get to the point where you can only be so efficient.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, then you start cutting services, and then that's a decision.
Look, we do have to try to divest ourselves as much of people that are with the healthcare and the pension situation, wherever we could get the services out of town, that's great, and in part-time employees or consultants coming in instead, that's gonna be the direction of the future, because the pension is just gonna keep going up, and the healthcare is gonna go up, and that's, that's the burden we face. So wherever we can consolidate our services, as far as having it done outside of town by consultants, or having it done with non-stocked employees, and that's where we have to go, we have to evaluate every position and every job. I think, Howard, you had sent me an interesting article saying how town departments are bidding against the private industry. And it's, it's just so wonderful, because, great, maybe our town department is the best, it's better than the private industry, but we have to see that. And if they're not, then they have to bid, because they have to bid against the private industry to be the best and do the best. And that's what we want, we want efficient people that work. For us, we want the department to be as lean as it could be, and if they know they have to bid, or they would sort of force themselves to learn what they have to do in order to, to win that bid next time. And that was a great.
Keeps them competitive, yeah.
It does, it keeps it competitive, and it keeps that on our tongue.
And just to give you an example, some towns have found that on a small piece of road repair, town can actually be more efficient than sending it out, but in a larger project, it's much more efficient to send out, so.
But without the analysis?
Yeah.
You know, you can make, you can wind it up, we did this with the, with the labor model for highway, the last column is private sector, and you fill in those blanks. So what does it cost us to do it, what does it cost private sector? If government is cheaper, you do that. If, if private sector is cheaper, you figure out, is it outsourced, or do we figure out a way to make a more efficient government? But without that analysis, you can't, you can't just, you can't assume government can do it cheaper or private sector can do it cheaper, you gotta look at those.
And very private, that's a lot more.
Yeah.
And then the, the numbers are much broader than we even imagined, because it's not only the employees, it's the equipment, the insurance, it's the gas, it's the building doing, it's the maintenance of the buildings, it's the land value of where that building is on that is producing us income instead of being off the tax draw. It's a lot more cost into it than just that one employee where they're not, he should be working there. So it's, it's the, the land cost, the building, the maintenance, and we see, all our buildings are falling apart. I mean, I'm embarrassed to work in our building department, I've been edging Joe, I'd have to work in there, I'd work there as a realtor, and I would condemn this building, it's bad. And we know that we have to fix these buildings up, but it's very expensive, and the capital improvements have to happen too.
Our next meeting is Friday, just wanna confirm.
Monday.
No, that's gonna be Monday, I'm waiting.
That's twice he's said that, he's gonna show up Friday.
I wanna push it to Friday, get it done. It's Monday, and it's gonna be a town hall.
Town hall, 8:00 AM.
At 8:00 AM, guys, so we'll be on time.
We'll go over the right.
I'll be a couple bucks or something.
I'll come here.
Now we'll go over this, you keep switching it.
I, I think you're up to the task.
I think so too.
Okay, any other comments? And we'll look forward to seeing everybody on Monday.